Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up the additional reference of business. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to the title of the bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as our community, committee reports and communications.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Secretary General is directed to read the title of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committee.
Additional reference of business: Bills on First Reading, House Bill # 9888 exempting all donations given by reason of local and international sports tournaments and competitions from the payment of donors' taxes, including those from private entities, by Representative Castillo.
Ways and Means.
House Bill # 9889 recognizing the existence of barangay porocks, providing for the manner of elections, term and qualifications of porock officials and granting benefits and privileges to porock leaders, by Representative Panotes.
Local Government.
House Bill # 9890 to provide for an integrated vaccine status recording and certification system, we shall function as a vaccine passport, by Representative Savellano.
Health and information and communications technology.
House Bill # 9891 exempting monetary donations and rewards in favor of national athletes and coaches from taxes, by Representative Salceda.
House Bill # 9892 strengthening the SK by institutionalizing additional reforms to revitalize youth participation in governance, by Representative D. Faustino Ino.
Local Government.
House Bill # 9894 classifying and assigning levels to all hospital emergency rooms based on their bed capacity, service capability, medical equipment and manpower complement, by Representative Reyes.
Health.
House Bill # 9895 establishing a Philippine electronic library, by Representative Castillo.
Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill # 9896 granting a franchise to Aspire Media Technologies and Ventures Inc., by Representative Garcia Jose Enrique.
Legislative Franchises.
House Bill # 9897 increasing the validity of authorization to solemnize marriage of priests, ministers or rabbis from three to five years, by Representative Yap Eric.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill # 9898 providing free legal assistance to any officer or enlisted personnel of the AFP and the PNP on any charge before the prosecutor's office, court of any competent body arising from an incident related to the performance of official duty, by Representative Yap Eric.
Justice.
House Bill # 9899 exempting all incentives, benefits, gifts and other emoluments given to national athletes by reason of winning an international sports competition from the payment of income, by Representatives Ordines and Marcoleta.
Ways and Means.
House Bill Numbers 9900, 9901 and 9903 to 9908 establishing testa manpower training and youth centers in certain barangays in Paranyake City, by Representative Tambunting.
Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill # 9902 providing free legal assistance to any officer or enlisted personnel of the AFP and the PNP on any charge before the prosecutor's office, court of any competent body arising from an incident or incidents related to the performance of official duty, by Representative Tambunting.
Justice.
House Bill # 9909 to prevent disinformation relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and protect the privacy of COVID-19 patients, by Representative Romualdo.
Public Information.
House Bill # 9910 creating the virology and vaccine institute of the Philippines, by Representative Romero.
Health and information and communications technology.
House Bill # 9911 creating a comprehensive e-governance master plan to foster the transition of government processes to the digital age, by Representative Romero.
Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill # 9912 establishing a center for disease prevention and control, by Representative Romero.
Health.
House Bill # 9914 strengthening the establishment and operations of the rural farm schools, by Representative Sharon Garin.
Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill # 9915 providing for solar lights to individual indigent households, by Representative Zubiri.
Energy.
House Bill # 9916 granting local air travel privileges to the personnel of the PNP and AFP, by Representative Zubiri.
Public order and safety and national defense and security.
Resolutions: House Resolution 2062 honoring the memory of the late statesman Raoul S. Manglapos, by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2063 urging the Executive Department through the DFA to support the TRIPS waiver, we shall suspend implementation, application and enforcement of the relevant provisions of the TRIPS agreement in relation to the prevention, containment and treatment of COVID-19, by Representative Tambunting.
Foreign Affairs.
House Resolution 2064 urging the DOH and the DTI to investigate the additional PPE fee being charged by the healthcare establishments to their customers and patients, by Representative Ordines.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2065 calling for the DSWD, DOF, DBM and other relevant government agencies to prepare the funds and immediately provide the needed financial assistance to Filipinos through the revival of the SAP in areas under the ECQ, by Representative Ordines.
Social Services.
House Resolution 2066 urging the DBM and the Committee on Appropriations to increase the proposed budget allocation of the DA for the immediately coming fiscal year, by Representative Zubiri.
Appropriations.
House Resolution 2067 expressing appreciation and support to the efforts of the Manila Broadcasting Company (DZRH) to help fight the proliferation of fake news through the hashtag #accountkoto campaign and calling the appropriate government agency to formulate policies in support of the initiative, by Representative Tan Angelina.
Public Information.
Message from the Senate, message dated August 2, 2021, informing the House that on July 26, 2021, the Senate adopted House Concurrent Resolution #18.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications: letters and emails from certain municipal mayors, city mayors and provincial governors submitting their reports on fund utilization and status of programs, projects, activities, implementation relative to the Bayanihan grant to cities, municipalities and provinces and the LGSF financial assistance to LGUs for certain months of 2021.
Appropriations.
Letters dated June 14, 2130 and July 7, 2021 of the BSP Deputy Director Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services transmitting to the House duly certified copies of BSP issuances.
Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Email dated July 6, 2021 from the Office of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines submitting to the House a copy of their 2020 annual report entitled "Trail Blazing the Innovation Ecosystem in Northern Mindanao."
Higher and Technical Education.
2020 Annual Report of the Manila International Airport Authority.
To the Committee on Transportation.
Annual Audit Reports on Certain Water Districts for the Year Ending December 31, 2020.
Appropriations.
Annual Audit Report on the Bulikan State University for the Year Ending December 31, 2020.
Appropriations. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, the privilege hour is opened. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to avail of the privilege hour, I respectfully move that we recognize the Honorable Arnulfo Arne Tevez of the Third District of Negroes Oriental.
Our esteemed Deputy Speaker from the Third District of Negroes Oriental, the Honorable Arne Tevez is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Good afternoon, everybody. I rise here again today dahil gusto ko sanang manawagan nananawagan ako sa ating Philippine Army. In fact, kinausap ko na nito si, but he just retired, no? Si Chief of Staff, um, Cyrilito Subiha Na. Kinausap ko rin 'yung Army Chief natin during the sauna when they were here dun sa taas. Sa alam ko kasi, ang Army at ang PNP ay dapat nonpartisan. Hindi ko maintindihan kung bakit two weeks ago, si General Angkan at si Colonel Penya natulog dun sa ilegal na resort ng kalaban ko sa politika. Kinausap ko si Colonel Penya, ang sabi niya, boss, sinamahan ko lang 'yung boss ko, si General Angkan dahil pinag-uusapan nila 'yung LCAC. Kung mag-uusap ng LCAC bakit gabi at bakit kailan mag-overnight sa resort na ilegal pa? Ito 'yung resort na tinayo on no-bill zones. Hindi ko rin maintindihan kung bakit hanggang ngayon 'yung resort na yun nakatayo pa rin. Hindi lang sa ganun, dapat sila bilang opisyal ng gobyerno hindi pumupunta sa mga ilegal na lugar. Nung tinawagan ko si General Subiha Na, sabi niya, if they extend that courtesy to your governor, they should extend the same courtesy to you. Imbitahan mo na lang sila. Ginawa ko yun, inimbitahan ko si General Angkan at si Colonel Penya nung July 29 sa isang resort sa aking distrito. Hindi sumipot si General Angkan, andami niyang rason kasi, basta andami niyang rason. Ako kasi simple lang eh, kung gusto may paraan, kung ayaw maraming dahilan. Si Penya sana pupunta. Sabi ko, wag na, kung hindi kompleto, wag na. Meron pa ako isang tanong dito. Akala ko ba, we are after enemies of the state. 'Yung gubernador namin, si Gobernador Degamo, siya ang nagsusuporta ng enemies of the state. Ang kinaiiinisang ko pa, nung kinausap ko si Colonel Penya tungkol dito, make no mistake, ha, we're friends, si Penya. But when I ask him, sabi niya pa, 'yung sinasabi mo na siya ang protektor ng kalaban ng Republika, controversial statement pa yan. Kung sasabihin nila controversial statement yun, ibig sabihin kulang 'yung intel nila. Kung hindi man kulang 'yung intel nila, may kinakampihan sila. Hindi ko lang alam kung kumikita sila dun dahil sa suporta o sa ano, pero alam ng lahat na 'yung gubernador namin ang tumutulong sa kalaban ng Republika. Kung mali ako, sabihan lang ako, right away I will resign. I told them that several times. I stake my position in these statements. Sana lang sa budget hearing, himayin natin 'yung intelligence funds ng Army kung saan nila ginagamit. Dapat ang bagay na ito, alam nga ng ordinaryong tao, hindi nila alam. Ayoko lang magmura, pero malapit ako magmura. Diba? Meron silang pera pang intel. Nagbabayad sila ng mga asset ng Army na nakasibilyan. Bakit hindi nila alam na ito 'yung supporter ng kalaban? Sinasamahan pa nila. Hindi lang yun. Diba? Dapat dalawa lang 'yung bodyguard. Bakit 'yung gubernador namin ang daming nagbabantay, Army pa, CAFGO pa? Minsan hindi ko na maintindihan ano nangyayari. Hindi ko kinakalaban gobyerno natin, baka malagyan na naman to ng kulay politika. Kilala niyo na ako dito sa Kongres. I always, I am always very honest and I always speak my mind. Even the higher-ups in government know me. I'm always very, very straight. Sana lang masaguto nila sa budget hearing at tayong lahat, kung wala man lang silang tamang intel, wag na natin bigyan ng pera. Hindi ko nga rin maintindihan bakit kinakampihan pa siya ng ibang nasa gobyerno natin. Siya rin ang nagsusuporta ng pagbebenta ng droga sa probinsya namin. Alam ng mga pulisyan, 'yung droga nakatago sa provincial jail, because there is a notion that the provincial jail cannot be raided without the permission of the governor. Para sa akin, bullshit yan. Kaya mo nga mag-raid ng private na bahay basta may search warrant lang. Last time when it was raided during the time, I think of Aaron Aquino, drugs were found not in the quarters of the prisoners but on the ones running the jail. How come he was not charged? He should have been charged because that's command responsibility. Hindi naman BGMP 'yung jail na yun eh, provincial jail yun, under the office of the governor. Sayang, nag-retire na si General Subiha Na. Si Angkan daw magre-retire ngayong August. Tinabihan ko ba 'yung Army? Alam niyo, boss, kung kinalaba, tinira niyo ako sa politika, wala akong laban sa inyo. Mas marami kayong baril sa akin, mas marami kayong tao. Kayang-kaya niyo kami pagdating sa eleksyon. Pero ang laban ko lang, pwede ko tanungin sa Kongreso kung ano nangyayari sa budget niyo at kung ano ang ginagawa niyo sa pera niyo. At dapat lang talaga ang Army walang kinakampihan kung hindi ang ating Republika. Again, they are supporting the ones who support the enemy of the state in Negroes Oriental. Hindi ko naman pwede utusan si Army Chief, pero kung marinig niya tong privilege speech ko, sana magawa niya ng paraan. At ayoko na ng puro na lang salita, magpakita kayo ng aksyon natutoo 'yung sinasabi niyo that you are after enemies of the state because you are saying a different thing but you are showing another. Yung, tinanong ko pa, kung paano nangyayari na ginagwaryahan nila ginagwaryahan nila 'yung gubernador ng ganong sangkaterbang tao. May utos daw galing sa isang mataas na opisyal ng ating gobyerno. Wala naman ako naitang papel, verbal lang. 'Yung isa kong mayor sa aking distrito, kalaban ko rin sa politika, si Mayor Galik. Kailan lang, may pinatay pa yun sila, nakapitan ko. Bakit isang truck na Army nagbabantay sa kanya? Ako nga, nahihiya ako or mag-request ng Army dahil para sa akin, mas mabuti na magamit yun ng Republika, kaysa ako lang at pamilya ko ang bantayan. Bakit sila binibigyan ng ganun? Bakit? I want answers to this and I hope I get answers before hearing your budgets. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. That's all for this afternoon. Thank you.
Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other House members who wishes to interpolate, I move that we refer the privilege speech of the Honorable Tevez to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. The privilege speech of the Honorable Tevez referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of, or the privilege hour. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried, the privilege hour is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider the following House bills: House Bill #9490 under Committee Report #1007, House Bill #8109 under Committee Report #1044, House Bill #9575 under Committee Report #1045, and House Bill #9576 under Committee Report #1046. And may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the four mentioned House bills under the cluster of local bills under Agriculture and Food.
House Bill #9490 enact developing the TICOG industry, creating for the purpose the TICOG Research and Development Center, establishing the Banig subsidy fund and declaring the municipality of Basie, the province of Samar, as the Banig capital of the Philippines. House Bill #8109 enact declaring the province of Ilocos Norte as the garlic capital of the Philippines. House Bill #9575 enact establishing the Youth, Young Farmers and Fisher Folk Challenge Program, creating for the purpose the Young Farmers and Fisher Folk Challenge Council and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill #9576 enact promoting the development of the bamboo industry by strengthening the Philippine Bamboo Industry Development Council, creating the Bamboo Industry Research and Development Center, providing incentives for bamboo plantation development and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga of the First District of Quezon to sponsor the aforementioned bills.
Our esteemed and hard-working Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture, the Honorable Marc Enverga from the First District of Quezon is recognized to sponsor the measures. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we recognize the Honorable Enverga for his privilege speech or sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Chairman has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note of the said committee report numbers.
What say the Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, we join the sponsor and post no objection to the aforementioned motion.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory notes of the four measures serve as their sponsorship speech. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate on the aforementioned bills, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the period of sponsorship and debate on the four House bills mentioned earlier is considered closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the period of amendments on the four House bills is open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection to the motion, period of amendments on the four measures is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Numbers 9490, 8109, 9575 and 9576 under the cluster of Agriculture and Food. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
All those in favor of the approval of the mentioned House bills, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9490, 8109, 9575 and 9576 approved on second reading. Congratulations to the Honorable Chairman and sponsor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill #9731 under Committee Report #1066 under Basic Education and Culture and may I request the Secretary General read the title of the aforementioned bill.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. House Bill 9731 is under consideration. Secretary General, please read the title of the measure.
House Bill #9731 enact establishing the Philippine High School for Creative Arts System and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I respectfully move that we recognize the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of ACT-CIS, party list to sponsor the bill.
Hearing no objection, the Honorable Rowena Nina Taduran of Party List ACT-CIS is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned bill be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join the sponsor and post no objection to the motion.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note of the measure will serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is considered closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, period of amendments is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, period of amendments on House Bill 9731 is considered terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill #9731.
There is a motion to approve House Bill 9731 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9731 approved on second reading. Congratulations to the Congratulations to the sponsor. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 39389 under Committee Report Number 974. May I request that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9389 is under consideration. Secretary General, kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9389, an act providing for a comprehensive nursing law, providing for a more responsive and effective health care system and appropriating funds therefore.
Esteemed Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Taduran once more to sponsor the bill.
Our honorable colleague from the Partilist Act CIS, the Honorable Ninyo Taduran, is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned bills be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Esteemed Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join the sponsor and post no objection to the motion.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note shall serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, to give his manifestation on House Bill Number 9389, I respectfully move that we recognize the Honorable Ferdinand Gaite of Bayan Muna Partilist.
Hearing no objection, the Honorable Ferdinand Gaite of Partilist Bayan Muna is recognized for his manifestation. Please proceed. Honorable Freddie Gaite, you have the floor. Majority leader, I believe he's not connected to Zoom. Honorable Freddie Gaite, you have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session is suspended for a few minutes. Session is resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize once more the Honorable Ferdinand El Gaite of Bayan Muna Partilist for his manifestation in House Bill Number 9389.
The Honorable Ferdinand Gaite of Partilist Bayan Muna is recognized. You have the floor, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this opportunity to make a manifestation. I apologize, I was with the other concurrent hearing, hearing on the Committee on Labor. First and foremost, we would like to manifest that we still continue to be, we have written the committee, and we continue to be an author of the House Bill 9389, which we are also, we have our colleagues in the Filipino Nurses United have supported. They have urged us to continue the support, which on the basis of the following. First, that there is recognition that the health as a basic human right of every Filipino as declared in the Section 2 of the Declaration of Policy of the said proposed bill, which necessitates that basic rights and welfare of nurses addressed so that Filipino people, especially the poor and marginalized, will have access to basic health, has been included. Secondly, upon the recommendations of the FNU, it has also included to cover all nurses, both in the public and private sector. Thirdly, the proposal to transfer section, the provision on salaries was accepted, especially on the issue of the nursing practice. However, it was not stated that the nurses in the private sector must receive the similar level of entry-level nurses, which was upgraded to salary grade 15 just last year. Other than that, there are some considerations that we still have some concerns, such as the issue of the required continuing professional development or CPD as a mandatory requirement, the categorization of nurses based on academic requirements, the adoption of the National Nurses Admission Test, and lastly, the retention of the section on return service agreement. However, based on their evaluation of the bill, there are more positive provisions which they can support, which is why we have maintained our position to be part of, as co-author of the said bill. And in due time, we shall present our position for a, to support the bill with some reservations. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues.
The manifestation of the Honorable Ferdinand Gaite regarding House Bill 9389 is very well noted. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate or make a manifestation on House Bill Number 9389, I move that we refer the privileged, the sponsorship speech as well as the manifestation of the Honorable Gaite. I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate on the measure is closed. Honorable Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Honorable Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 9389.
All those in favor of the approval on second reading of House Bill 9389, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9389 is approved on second reading. Congratulations to the sponsor. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9778 under Committee Report Number 1067, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House bill.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9778 under consideration. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9778, an act allowing voting by proxy in primary cooperatives, thereby amending for the purpose Chapter 4, Article 36 of Republic Act Number 9520, otherwise known as the Philippine Cooperative Code of 2008.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Rowena Ninyo Taduran of Act CIS Partilist to sponsor the aforementioned bill.
The Honorable Lady from the Act CIS Partilist, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure. You have the floor.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned measure be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join the sponsor and post no objection to the motion.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Sponsorship of the measure will be its explanatory note. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
There being no others wish to interpolate, motion is carried, sponsorship and debate on the measure is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Period of amendments is open. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual and committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 9778.
All those in favor of House Bill 9778, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9778 is approved on second reading. Congratulations to the sponsor. Majority leader.
Madam, Mr. Speaker, I move that consider House Bill 9806 as contained Committee Report 1074, submitted by the Committee on Disaster Resiliency. I may request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9806 is under consideration, and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9806, an act mandating public and private educational institutions and all business establishments, including facilities, handlings, storing and transporting hazardous materials to participate in the conduct of a quarterly nationwide simultaneous earthquake and emergency preparedness drill and providing penalties for violations thereof.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninyo Taduran of Act CIS Partilist to sponsor the bill and for her...
The sponsor, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo Taduran of the Partilist Act CIS is recognized for her sponsorship of the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned measure be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory speech.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. The explanatory note of the measure shall serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is open. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to introduce individual amendments, committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill, House Bill 9806.
All those in favor of House Bill 9806 for approval on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9806 is approved on second reading. Congratulations to the sponsor. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9311, as contained Committee Report 938. May I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill 9311 shall begin. Secretary General, please read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9311, an act enhancing the continuing professional development of Filipino professionals as an integral component of the career progression and specialization programs and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 10912, otherwise known as the Continuing Professional Development Act of 2016.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend consideration of House Bill 9311.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill 9311 is suspended. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 9608, as contained Committee Report 1055, submitted by the Committee on Information and Communication Technology. I move that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. House Bill 9608 is under consideration. Secretary General, please read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9608, an act establishing the no call, no text, and no email registration system and providing penalties for violations thereof.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Rowena Ninyo Taduran of Act CIS Partilist to sponsor the bill and to sponsorship.
Our esteemed sponsor, the Lady from the Partilist Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo Taduran, is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 9608 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Explanatory note shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Period of amendments is open. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we, there's, Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to introduce committee amendments or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the period of amendments is closed. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 9608.
Are there any objections? All those in favor of House Bill 9608, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9608 is approved on second reading. Congratulations to the sponsor. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 9651 as contained Committee Report 1059. May I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. House Bill 9651, as found in Committee Report 1059, is under consideration. Secretary General, please read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9651, an act strengthening the regulatory framework on data privacy protection aligning with international standards, challenges and other cross-border data processing concerns, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 10173, otherwise known as the Data Privacy Act of 2012.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninyo Taduran to sponsor the bill.
Are there any objections? Motion is carried. The honorable sponsor, the Lady from the Partilist Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo O Taduran is recognized... is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 9651 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. The explanatory note of House Bill 9651 shall serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other, uh, committee amendments, individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 9651.
With no objections, we will proceed with the voting. All those in favor of House Bill 9651's approval on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9651 is approved on second reading. Congratulations to the sponsor. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 9567 as contained Committee Report 1042, submitted by Committee on Justice. May I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. House Bill 9567 is under consideration. Could the Secretary General read the title of the measure?
House Bill Number 9657, an act creating five additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Third Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of San Jose del Monte, Province of Bulacan, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14C of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
This is House Bill 9567. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran of Act CIS Party List for, uh, to sponsor the bill and for her sponsorship speech.
Our esteemed colleague, honorable sponsor, the Lady from the Party List Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned bill be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note, uh, to be a sponsorship speech of House Bill 9567.
Hearing no objection, the explanatory note of the measure will serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and speech and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other individ-, uh, committee amendments, individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. The period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 9567.
Are there any objections? All those in favor of House Bill 9567, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9567 is approved on second reading. Congratulations to the sponsor. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 9581 as contained Committee Report 1049. May I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9581 is under consideration. Secretary General, kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9581, an act creating two additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in the Sixth Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Ibahay and converting the existing Municipal Circuit Trial Court for the Ibahay-Nabas Circuit into the Municipal Trial Court for Nabas, all in the Province of Aklan and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 30 of Batas Pambansabilang 129 as amended, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran Act CIS Party List to sponsor the bill and for her sponsorship speech.
The Lady from the Party List Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 9581 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note to be a sponsorship speech of House Bill 9581.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note of House Bill 9581 will serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendments is opened.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to introduce committee amendments or individual amendment, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we, uh, approve on second reading, House Bill 9581.
Are there any objections? All those in favor of House Bill 9581, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9581 is approved on second reading. Congratulations to the sponsor. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 9533 as contained Committee Report 1022, submitted by the Committee, Committee Micro, Small and Medium Enterprise Development. May I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. House Bill 9533 as found in Committee Report 1022 is under consideration. Secretary General, kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9533, an act promoting entrepreneurship by establishing a socialized microfinancing program for microenterprises through the Pondo sa Pagbabago at Pag-asenso Program and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran of Act CIS Party List to sponsor the bill and for her sponsorship speech.
The Lady from the Party List Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 9533 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendments is opened. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, we... There being no other member wishes to introduce, uh, committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 9533.
All those in favor of House Bill 9533, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9533 is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 9833 as contained in Committee Report Number 1087, submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources. May I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9833 is under consideration. Secretary General, please read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 9833, an act providing stronger measures for the conservation and protection of wildlife resources and their habitats, repealing for the purpose Republic Act Number 9147 for the Wildlife Resources Conservation and Protection Act and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran Act CIS Party List to sponsor the bill and for her sponsorship speech.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. The Honorable Ninyo O'Taduran of the Party List Act CIS is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned measure be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce, uh, committee amendments, individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 9833.
Hearing no objections, we proceed with the voting. All those in favor of House Bill 9833's approval on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9833 is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 9143 as contained Committee Report 893, submitted by the Committee on Science and Technology. May I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9143 is under consideration. Secretary General, kindly read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 9143, an act institutionalizing the national policy on access and benefit sharing from the utilization of Philippine genetic resources and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran of Act CIS Party List to sponsor the bill and for her sponsorship speech.
Our esteemed sponsor, the Lady from the Party List Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 9143 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the period of sponsorship and debate is terminated. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. The period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 9143.
Hearing no objection, voting will proceed. All those in favor of the approval on second reading of House Bill 9143, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9143 is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 9315 as contained Committee Report Number 943, submitted by the Committee on Subgrades and Election Reform.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9315 is under consideration. Secretary General, kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill 9315, an act providing for the expeditions resolution of electoral protest.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran of Act CIS Party List to sponsor the bill and for her sponsorship speech.
Our esteemed sponsor, the Honorable Rowena Ninyo O'Taduran of the Party List Act CIS is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned bill be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move uh, that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader? Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, period of amendments is opened, majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no committee amendments or nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, period of amendments is closed, majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill nine three one five.
Hearing no objection, voting will proceed. All those in favor of House Bill nine three one five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill nine three one five is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill nine five five, nine five five seven as containing Committee Report one zero three six. May I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, consideration of House Bill nine five five seven shall begin. Secretary General, please read the title of the bill.
House Bill nine five five seven, an act providing an efficient procedure for declaring a new sense candidate and imposing stiffer penalties on the new sense candidate and any person who has caused the finding of a new sense candidate's certificate of candidacy. Amending for the purpose section sixty nine of Batas Pambansa Bilang eight eight one as amended, also known as the Omnibus Election Code of the Philippines.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to sponsor the measure.
The lady from the Partilis Act C I S, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mister Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill number nine five five seven be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note of the House Bill nine five five seven as a sponsorship speech.
Hearing no objection, explanatory note shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried, period of amendments is opened. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no committee amendments or nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried, period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill ninety five fifty seven.
With no objections, voting shall proceed. All those in favor of House Bill nine five five seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill nine five five seven is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill nine five six two as containing Committee Report number one zero four zero. May I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill nine five six two will begin. Secretary General, please read the title of the bill.
House Bill nine five six two, an act providing for early voting by qualified senior citizens and persons with disabilities in national and local elections.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to sponsor the measure.
Our esteemed Deputy Majority Leader, the Honorable Lady from the Partilis Act C I S, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure, please proceed.
Maraming salamat po. Mister Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill number nine five six two be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note of House Bill nine five six two as a sponsorship speech.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Explanatory note shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of amendment, uh, period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried, period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried, period of amendments is opened. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried, period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill nine five six two.
Are there any objections? Voting shall proceed, hearing no objections. All those in favor of House Bill nine five six two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill nine five six two is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill nine seven eight five as containing Committee Report number one zero six nine. May I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, consideration of House Bill nine seven eight five shall proceed. Secretary General, please read the title of the bill.
House Bill nine seven eight five, an act strengthening the commission of elections by increasing the manpower complement in its field offices, providing office spaces separate and independent from local government units and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose Batas Pambansa Bilang eight eight one as amended, otherwise known as the Omnibus Election Code of the Philippines.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to sponsor the measure.
The lady from the Partilis Act C I S, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran is recognized for her sponsorship of the measure, please proceed.
Thank you Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned measure be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note of House Bill nine seven eight five as a sponsorship speech.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Sponsorship speech of House Bill nine seven eight five shall be the explanatory note. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried, period of amendments is opened. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried, period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill nine seven eight five.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, voting shall proceed. All those in favor of House Bill nine seven eight five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill nine seven eighty five, approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Bill nine three zero six as containing Committee Report number nine three three. May I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. House Bill nine three zero six is under consideration. Secretary General, please read the title of the bill.
House Bill nine three zero six, an act providing for a comprehensive and rationalized grant of rewards to informers for the discovery of violations of Internal Revenue and Customs laws.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to, to sponsor the measure.
Our esteemed colleague, the lady from the Partilis Act C I S, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran is recognized for her sponsorship of the measure, please proceed.
Maraming salamat Mister Speaker. Once again Mister Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill number nine three zero six be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note of House Bill nine three oh six as a sponsorship speech.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note of House Bill nine three oh six shall serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, motion is approved. Sponsorship and debate is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
With no objections, the motion is carried, period of amendments is opened. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendment or nor individual amendment, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, period of amendments is closed. Majority leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill nine three oh six.
Hearing no objection, voting shall proceed. All those in favor of House Bill nine three oh six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill nine three zero six is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, pursuant to our rules, I move for the omnibus approval on second reading of the following local bills under Basic Education and Culture. In particular, House Bill number nine six zero seven under Committee Report number one zero five four, House Bill number nine six five seven under Committee Report number one zero six two, House Bill number nine six five eight under Committee Report number one zero six three, House Bill number nine six five nine under Committee Report number one zero six four, and House Bill number nine six six zero under Committee Report number one zero six five.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Consideration of those mentioned House bills as found in our calendar of business under the cluster of Basic Education and Culture shall begin. Majority floor leader.
Thank you Mister Speaker. I respectfully move that we recognize the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to sponsor the aforementioned bills.
Our esteemed Deputy Majority Leader, the lady from the Act C I S Partilis, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran is recognized to sponsor these local measures, please proceed.
Thank you so much Mister Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned measures be adopted as the sponsorship speeches.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory notes of those mentioned House bills shall serve as their sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate on the aforementioned bills, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried, period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried, period of amendments is opened. Majority floor leader.
There being no individual and committee amendments, Mister Speaker, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried, period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider for omnibus approval on second reading House Bill numbers nine six zero seven, nine six five seven, nine six five eight, nine six five nine, and nine six six zero.
Hearing no objection, voting on these local measures clustered under Basic Education and Culture shall proceed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bills nine six zero seven, nine six five seven, nine six five eight, nine six five nine, and nine six six zero approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider for omnibus approval on second reading House Bill numbers nine seven seven nine under Committee Report number one zero six eight and House Bill number nine eight three seven under Committee Report number one zero eight eight, all under health. So moved Mister Speaker.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Pursuant to our rules, House Bills nine seven seven nine and nine eight three seven under the cluster of health in our calendar of business shall begin consideration. Majority leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Rowena Nina Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to sponsor the aforementioned bills.
Our esteemed sponsor, the lady from the Partilis Act C I S, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran is recognized to sponsor these measures, please proceed.
Salamat po Mister Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned bills be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, we join the sponsor and pose no objection to the motion.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Explanatory note of these measures shall serve as their sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no interpolation for the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. The sponsorship and debate on these measures is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, period of amendments is opened. Majority floor leader.
There being no individual and committee amendments, Mister Speaker, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried, period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve for omnibus approval on second reading House Bill numbers nine seven seven nine and nine eight three seven.
Hearing no objection, voting shall proceed. All those in favor, second reading approval of House Bill nine seven seven nine and nine eight three seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill nine seven seven nine and nine eight three seven approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve, uh, me, for omnibus approval on second reading House Bill numbers nine six five zero under Committee Report number one zero five eight and House Bill number nine eight zero two under Committee Report number one zero seven two.
Hearing no objection, the motions are... Mister... Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Under consideration are House Bills nine six five zero and nine eight zero two under the cluster of higher and technical education in our calendar of business. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to sponsor the aforementioned bills.
Our Deputy Majority Leader, the Honorable Nina O. Taduran of the Partilis Act C I S is recognized to sponsor these measures.
Mister Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned the measures be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, we join the sponsor and pose no objection to the motion.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Explanatory notes of the measures shall serve as their sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no member to interpolate on the aforementioned bills, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendment.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried, period of amendments is open. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried, period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill numbers nine six five zero and nine eight zero two.
Hearing no objections to the motion, voting shall proceed. All those in favor of House Bill nine six five zero and nine eight oh two, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill nine six five zero and nine eight zero two approved on second reading. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve on omnibus, uh, second, approval on second reading House Bill nine eight one four as, uh, under the Committee Report of ten seventy five. House Bill nine eight one five under the Committee, uh, number one zero seven six. House Bill nine eight one six under the Committee Report number one zero seven seven. House Bill nine eight one seven under the Committee Report number one zero seven eight. House Bill nine eight one eight under the Committee Report number one zero seven nine. House Bill nine eight one nine under the Committee Report number one zero eight zero. House Bill nine eight twenty under the Committee Report number one zero eight one.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Aforementioned House bills in the cluster of local government in our calendar of business are under consideration. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to sponsor the said bills.
Hearing no objection, our esteemed sponsor, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of the Partilis Act C I S is recognized for her sponsorship of the measures, please proceed.
Maraming salamat. Mister Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned measures be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, we join her, the motion.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory notes of the measures shall serve as their sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, may, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Sponsorship and debate on the above measures is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objections, motion is carried, amendments are opened.
Mister Speaker, there being, uh, no other committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried, period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
I move for the omnibus approval on second reading of House Bill nine, uh, of the said measure.
Mister colleagues opposed, hearing none, motion is carried. All those in favor of House Bills nine eight one four, nine eight one five, nine eight one six, nine eight one seven, nine eight one eight, nine eight one nine, nine eight two zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Aforementioned House Bills approved on second reading. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve omnibus approval on second reading House Bill nine five eight six under the Committee Report number ten fifty two. House Bill ninety eight twenty five under the Committee Report number ten eighty three. House Bill ninety eight twenty seven under the Committee Report number ten eighty five. House Bill eighty eight, uh, ninety eight twenty nine under the Committee Report number ten eighty six.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Those aforementioned House Bills in the cluster of tourism in our calendar of business are under consideration. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran of Act C I S Partilis to sponsor the said bills.
We recognize our hardworking sponsor, the lady from the Partilis Act C I S, Deputy Majority Leader Rowena Nina O. Taduran to sponsor said measures, please proceed.
Thank you Mister Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned measures be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Um, sir Speaker, we join her motion.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Explanatory notes of the measures shall serve as their sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried, period of sponsorship is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried, period of amendments is open. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve on, uh, omnibus, uh, I move that, uh, approve on omnibus, uh...
Hearing no objection to the motion of our Majority Floor Leader, omnibus voting on House Bills nine five eight six, nine eight two five, nine eight two seven, and nine eight two nine shall proceed. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bills 9586, 9825, 9827, 9829 are approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider, uh, for second reading House Bill 9786 under the Committee Report number 1070.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. House Bill 9786 is under consideration. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninya O'Taduran of Act CIS Partilis.
Our esteemed sponsor, the honorable lady from the Partilis Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninya O'Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill number 9786 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House... Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Mr., uh, majority leader, may I solicit the proper motion to close the period of sponsorship and debate?
Sir Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objections, the period of amendments is opened. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, there being no committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Majority leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill 9786.
With no objections, voting shall proceed. All those in favor of House Bill 9786, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9786 is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on omnibus, uh, approval on second reading House Bill 9801 as contained Committee Report number 1071. House Bill 9803 as contained Committee Report number 1073. House Bill 9824 as contained Committee Report number 1082.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Aforementioned House Bills are under consideration. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninya O'Taduran of Act CIS Partilis to sponsor the bill.
We recognize our esteemed sponsor, our deputy majority leader, the Honorable Rowena Ninya O'Taduran, to sponsor this measure. So move...
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bills number 9801, 9803, and 9824 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory notes of those measures shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, we terminate the pre, uh... There being no member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
With no objections, motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is terminated. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened.
Sir Speaker, there being no committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I'm, I'm move that we approve on second reading how the following, uh, measures.
With no objections, voting shall proceed. All those in favor of House Bills 9801, 9803, 9824, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Aforementioned House Bills are approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading House Bill 9622 under the Committee Report number 1056. So move.
With no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9622 is under consideration. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninya O'Taduran of Act CIS Partilis to sponsor the measure.
Our esteemed sponsor, our deputy majority leader, the honorable lady from Partilis Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninya O'Taduran is recognized for her sponsorship of this House Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of House Bill number 9622 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note of House Bill 9622 as explanatory, as sponsorship speech.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, period of sponsorship and debate is closed.
Sir Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened.
Sir Speaker, there being no member wishes to introduce in committee amendment, uh, nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move, uh, that we approve on second reading House Bill 9622.
Hearing no objections, voting shall proceed. All those in favor of House Bill 9622, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9622 is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move for one minute's suspension.
Session is suspended for a few minutes. Session is resumed. Majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move, uh, that we consider on second reading House Bill 9649 as con- uh, contained Committee Report number 1057 as con- submitted by the Higher and Techno- Technical Education. May I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. House Bill 9649 is under consideration and can the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure?
House Bill 9649, an act establishing a technical education and skills development authority, TESDA, Training and Assessment Center in the city of Mati, province of Dava Oriental, to be known as the Mati City Dava Oriental TESDA Training and Assessment Center and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Rowena Ninya O'Taduran of Act CIS Partilis to sponsor the mes- bill.
Our esteemed deputy majority leader, the lady from the Partilis Act CIS, the Honorable Rowena Ninya O'Taduran, is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat. Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of, uh, House Bill number 9649 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, we join the, we join her motion.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note of the measures shall serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, there being no...
Committee.
I move that we open the period of committee amendments.
Hearing no objection, the period of committee amendments is now open.
There being no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of committee amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the period of committee amendments is closed. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of individual amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of individual amendments is opened. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Lawrence Defensor to introduce, uh, individual amendments. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Our esteemed deputy majority leader, the Honorable Lawrence Noi Defensor is recognized to introduce his individual amendments. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I respectfully request the permission of the sponsor to propose individual amendments to House Bill number 9649. On section one, lines one and two of the short title, between the open quotation mark and the word, open quote, "Davao", and quote, delete the words "Mati City" and the comma, and between the words, open quote, "TESDA", and "Training Center", end quote, insert the word "Provincial". Section one now reads as follows. "Section one, short title: This act shall be known as the Davao Oriental TESDA Provincial Training and Assessment Center", end quote. Will the sponsor accept the proposed individual amendment?
Mr. Speaker, we accept the amendment.
What does the majority floor leader say?
Sir Speaker, I move that we accept the amendment.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Individual amendments are accepted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On section two, lines four and five between the article, open quote, "D", end quote, and the word, open quote, "Davao", end quote, delete the words, open quote, "Mati City", end quote, and the, open quote, comma, end quote, on the same section between the words, open quote, "TESDA", end quote, and, open quote, "Training", end quote, insert the word, open quote, "Provincial", end quote, period. Section two should now read as, should now read as follows. Open quote, "Section two, establishment: There is hereby established a Training and Assessment Center under the supervision of the TESDA, comma, to be known as the Davao Oriental TESDA Provincial Training and Assessment Center", end quote. Will the sponsor accept the proposed individual amendment?
Mr. Speaker, we accept the amendment.
Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Amendments are accepted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On section three, lines eight and nine between the word, open quote, "Da", end quote, and the word, open quote, "Davao", end quote, comma, delete the words, open quote, "Mati City", end quote, and the, comma, and on the same section between the words, "TESDA", and "Training Center", insert the word, open quote, "Provincial", end quote. Section three should now read as follows. Open quote, "Section three, general mandate: The Davao Oriental TESDA Provincial Training and Assessment Center", comma, here and after, here and after referred to as "the center" shall primarily provide technical-dash-vocational education and training programs to students and local residents from low-income families and out-of-school youths, comma, including persons with disabilities and indigenous peoples in the city of Mati and the neighboring localities of the province of Davao Oriental to help them become productive, comma, self-reliant, comma, and globally competitive labor assets, period, end quote. Will the sponsor accept the proposed individual amendment?
Mr. Speaker, we accept the amendment.
Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Amendments as proposed are accepted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the title of House Bill number 9649, between the article "Da" and the word "Davao", delete the words, open quote, "Mati City", end quote, and the comma, between the words "TESDA", and "Training", insert the word, open quote, "Provincial", end quote. The title of House Bill number 9649 should now read as follows. Open quote, "An act establishing a technical educational and skills development authority, TESDA, Training and Assessment Center in the city of Mati, province of Davao Oriental, to be known as the Davao Oriental TESDA Provincial Training and Assessment Center", comma, and appropriating funds therefore, end quote. Will the sponsor accept the proposed individual amendment?
Mr. Speaker, we accept the amendment.
Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Amendments are accepted. Please proceed.
I have no further amendments, Mr. Speaker. Thank you so much, and thank you to the sponsor.
Majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to introduce individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the period of amendments is closed. Majority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill 9649.
Kindly reiterate your motion, majority leader?
Mr. Speaker, I mo- um, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill 9649.
Hearing no objection, motion, uh, voting on House Bill 9649 shall proceed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9649, as amended, is approved on second reading. Majority floor leader?
Sir Speaker, I move that we suspend the session for a few minutes.
Session is suspended. Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House resolutions to the appropriate committees.
Please proceed.
House Resolution eighteen forty-four to the Committee on Energy, House Resolution eighteen seventy-two to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, House Resolution eighteen seventy-four to the Committee on Energy, House Resolution eighteen ninety to the Committee on Agricultural and Food, House Resolution eighteen ninety-one to the Committee on Cooperative Development, House Resolution nineteen oh-three to the Committee on National Defense and Security, House Resolution nineteen sixteen to the Committee on Natural Resources, House Resolution nineteen eighteen to the Committee on Information and Communication Technology, House Resolution nineteen twenty-six to the Committee on Muslim Affairs and Local Government, House Resolution nineteen thirty-four to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, House Resolution nineteen thirty-six to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution nineteen thirty-seven to the Committee on Energy, House Resolution nineteen thirty-nine to the Committee on Welfare of Children, House Resolution nineteen sixty-six to the Committee on Health. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following speeches to the appropriate committee.
Please proceed.
Speech delivered by the Honorable Representative Dalipe to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, speech delivered by the Honorable Representative Bordado to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, in addition to the referrals of inquiries in aid of legislation, may I move that House Resolution eighteen twenty-two be referred to the Committee on Good Government and Transportation.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for a suspension?
Session is suspended for a few minutes.
Name is Arsel. Ano mo na sa seni? Okay, okay. Oh. Sigur, inaantay, inaantay na rin sa door. Oo. Ayun nga, ayun din 'yung in-ten-syon nga nila. Pwede ko bang sabihin? Sonong? Oo, 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 oo. Sila pala ang ano, wala pa. O, sige lang, sabihan. Oo, oo, oo. Sige, sige. Kung ano, kung sakit ka ni Arsel, sabihin. Yo. Ha? E filing ng, yup, yup. Inaabangan nila 'yan, papagana. Okay. Oh, okay, salamat din. Ano mo kami? Okay, thank you. Sabi ni Flor, wala pa daw 'yung sinado sa BFP. Tapos na daw 'yung.
No? Kincheck ni ano, from clear to taas. Almost all, tapos na ho eh. Yan nga, yan din, tinapatawa.
Oi, okay na.
Oo, kanina eh, buti na. Tawag na tawag.
Next time, man, must be class third local, babasa.
Pinagustuhan niya 'yung title.
Sabasahin 'yung title.
Nang local, babasahin. Ay, class third. Anapin niya, rural kuwa, nang ano, rural bank.
Zoom. Kong Junikua. Salang natin, may phone na lang.
Ewan, paano ko rin doon, na ready na si ano. Anapin niya, rural bank, sebantandu niyo, bago-bago, rural bank, uh, si Erma Junikua. Tinapachek nga namin, sir eh. Paginutak mo rin.
Yes, po. Yung kaya, chile ko. Yung naradarachon niya.
Karap na. Tapos na to. Rural bank.
Ten twenty-nine.
Nine five four three. Salam, salam, sir.
Ten twenty-nine. Ten twenty-nine.
Ten twenty-nine. Nine five four three, no? House Bill nine five four three.
August three, four, two. August three, four, two.
Session is resumed. Majority floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that we consider House Bill ninety-five forty-three as contained in Committee Report number ten twenty-nine. May we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure?
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. We begin consideration of House Bill nine five four three as found in Committee Report one zero two nine. Could the Secretary General read the title of the House Bill?
House Bill number nine five four three, an act providing for a new rural banks act, repealing for the purpose Republic Act number seven three five three, otherwise known as the Rural Banks Act of nineteen ninety-two as amended.
Majority floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. May I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate and recognize the Honorable Representative Junikua for his sponsorship.
Hearing no objection, the period of sponsorship and debate is open. We recognize our esteemed gentleman from the Lone District of Kirino, veteran legislator, the Honorable Junikua, to sponsor said measure. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, for your kind words and for the opportunity to, uh, allow this humble representation to sponsor a very important bill. Uh, this bill, uh, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, is, uh, long overdue and, uh, in the interest of time, uh, let me, uh, just insert into the records the explanatory note of this bill.
Majority leader.
As the sponsorship speech. Uh, and let me hasten to as well that, uh, uh, put in place, believe legal framework for the, uh, for the strengthening, uh, of the, of the rural banking industry. Hello? Uh, by, by putting in place certain provisions that will, uh, promote, uh, the sustainability of rural banks as well as uh, improve the governance and providing certain incentives to, uh, I seek the support of. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. May I, uh, may I move to suspend consideration of House Bill ninety-five forty-three?
Before we suspend consideration, Majority Floor Leader, could I solicit the proper motion that the explanatory note as well as the written remarks of the Honorable Junikua, which he may submit, be entered as the sponsorship speech of the measure?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. May I move that we adopt the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech and the manifestations made.
Which he may submit in writing.
Which remain subject to writing.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. The explanatory note of the measure shall serve as its sponsorship speech and the Honorable Junikua may submit in writing his manifestations as part of the sponsorship.
Major. Very much, Mr. Speaker. Once again, may I reiterate my motion to sp- suspend consideration of House Bill number ninety-five forty-three?
Hearing no objection, consideration of House Bill nine five four three is suspended.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. We are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill number ninety-three twenty-three and Senate Bill number one nine five five establishing the regulatory framework for the safe operations of the liquefied petroleum gas industry. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill nine three two three and Senate Bill one nine five five are ratified. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for a suspension?
Session is suspended for a few minutes.
Okay. In short, ano, nandyan na kayo. Aroto. Ayan, Aroto, nauna niya pala yun.
Diretso na natin kung ang second reading?
Alin niya, sir?
Yung immigration? Hindi, kanina. Okay, sponsor na ba to?
Oo, di.
Na dati na, kamusta?
Bakit po to? Bakit dos ba talaga inaapplyan? Sabihin mo kung dos yan, eh, in-dos pa siya ngayon eh. Pa't ilipas pa siya ng dos? Baka tres yan. Sabihin mo nato sino kumuha yan. Yan ang ano pa comment po? Anong paget kay Kamila? O, lipat ng sila, karaan lang.
Mr. Speaker.
Session is resumed. Majority leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that we resume consideration of House Bill eighty-eight fifty. May we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill eight-eight-five-zero shall continue. Secretary General kindly read the me- title of the House Bill.
House Bill number eight-eight-five-zero, an act modernizing the Bureau of Immigration by defining its powers and functions, further professionalizing its organization, upgrading the compensation and benefits of its officials and employees, and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority floor leader, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, the status of the House Bill is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. May we recognize the sponsor, the Honorable Rufus Rodriguez?
Our esteemed Deputy Speaker, the gentleman from the Second District of Cagayan de Oro City, law legal luminary, the Honorable Rufus Rodriguez is recognized to continue his sponsorship of the measure. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Ferdinand Gaithe for his interpolation?
The gentleman from the party list bayan muna, the Honorable Ferdinand Gaithe is recognized for his chance to interpolate the sponsor. Please proceed.
Salamat po, kagalang-galan na speaker. Sa magandang habang muli sa ating lahat. Uh, sa pagkakataong ito, hinili ko po na kung pagpahintulutan ang ating distinguished Congressman, Congressman de Oro, and also formerly the Commissioner of the Bureau of Immigration and deportation during, uh, I think President Estrada's term, if I'm not mistaken, uh, to ask some clarificatory questions regarding the proposed House Bill eighty-eight-five-zero, your honors. Nakamute po si Congressman Rufus.
Ye- yes, your honor.
Ayan po.
Can you hear me now because I have difficulty in, uh, hearing, uh?
Sige po, uh, salamat po. Uh, muli, uh, kagalang-galan na speaker, uh, salamat po sa pagkakataong ito. At, uh, hinihili ko lang po kung papayagan po ng ating distinguished Congressman from, uh, Cagayan de Oro City and also formerly the Commissioner of the BID, uh, Bureau of Immigration and deportation during the presidency of, uh, President, uh, Joseph Estrada. And, uh, kung papahintulutan po na magkaroon ng ilang katanungan hangil sa House Bill eighty-eight-five-zero tungkol sa Bureau of Immigration Modernization, uh, your honors.
Uh, gladly, uh, uh, Mr. Speaker, gladly to our good friend Congressman Ferdinand Gaithe.
Salamat po, uh, sa ating distinguished Congressman Rodriguez. At, uh, may ilang aktory katanungan lamang po at alam ko naman po na uh, matagal-tagal na rin po ito na sinail. At, uh, mahaba-haba na rin po proseso. I, I cannot specifically rem- remember, uh, which Congress this was already filed, but, uh, totoo naman, uh, mahaba na yung naging proses dito. Uh, at, uh, kunin po katanungin, uh, ako rin po ay, uh, nakatulong sa ating mga kawanin ng BID. Uh, dahil nga po sa maraming sunire nila sa usapin ng mga Pilipisyo, sa kasigurahan sa tabaho, at iba pa. Yung sa kanilang unyon, yang Immigration Officers Association Philippines at yung BID bukod na matagal rin namin nakatuwang sa maraming usapin, uh, sa usapin ng, ng kanilang mga batayang karabatan. Um, patungkol po dito sa, uh, House Bill eighty-eight-five-zero, meron po kong query regarding, um, entitled three immigration chapter nine on the item presidential prerogative section.
Oh, yes.
Opo, section seventy-one in the presidential prerog- uh, prerogative twenty-four, uh, I proceed, Mr. Chair. Ano ho ba yung gusto nating baguhin dito sa panukalang batas na ito? Doon sa dating batas, I believe, uh, panahon pa ng Commonwealth, yung original na batas. Commonwealth Act of, uh, six, uh, Commonwealth Act number six-hundred-and-thirteen, Philippine Immigration Act of nineteen-forty. Ano ba yung mga mayor na mga gustong baguhin sa panukalang batas na ito? Para lang ma, uh, ipaliwanag ng gusto sa ating mapabayanan, Mr. Chair?
Well, the presidential prerogative has always been there under CA six-one-three. The president can always, uh, order a deportation of anybody, any foreigner in the country. And the reason for that is because the Bureau of Immigration and the Department of Justice are under the office of the president. And the president is the chief executive of all executive offices. So, uh, it's always a part and parcel of the presbyrational power. In fact, any other, in fact, they will, when there is an ordered deportation, they can appeal to the Secretary of Justice. If there's an ordered deportation by the, uh, Bureau of Immigration Commissioner, they go to the Department of Justice and then in fifteen days and then we have thirty days to go to the office of the president. So the president practically decides on whether a person will be deported or not, uh, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, dati na po itong, uh, presidential powers, uh, ng, uh, kahit dun na sa nabanggit po yung, uh, original na, uh, Philippine Immigration Act of nineteen-forty. Uh, at, um, labas po nga rin po, at tama naman po, no? Na kalakhanong mga nasabi, mga prerogatives ng pangulo ay nakasaad. Ngunit may dinagdag, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, kagalang-galan na sponsor, itong item letter F. Uh, and please allow me to read. Uh, letter F states that prohibit, uh, the any provision of this act to the contrary, contrary not with standing. The president may, letter F, prohibit the departure from the Philippines of any person who is likely to dispose information affecting national security, kama, or who is likely to organize a rebellion abroad against the Philippines, kama, or whose presence in the country is necessary to face kama or be a witness in criminal proceedings, uh, and so forth and so on. So, hindi ho ba, ano ho bang, bakit ho nilagay itong prob- proviso na to? Na originally, wala po doon sa, uh, Philippine Immigration Act of nineteen-forty. Uh, dahil may ilang concernan po kami. Pwede ho bang maipaliwanag unay po, uh, kagalang-galan na sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, yes, uh, while it is true that there is in the previous law the, uh, the, uh, provision for the president and it's also found in the constitution, the prerogative of the president over acts in the executive department, including BI. That is a new provision that is placed there. And, uh, I am, I am, uh, therefore agreeable to the appropriate time to have that deleted, to prevent anybody from leaving. Yes, because, uh, precisely, uh, they are leaving already and we cannot anymore stop, uh, if they leave, if they want to talk about, uh, our country abroad, well, that is their right, uh, uh, Mr. Speaker. So in the proper, uh, in the proper time, uh, we will accept the amendment to, to remove that, to prevent, uh, anybody from leaving. Unless, of course, the prosecutor, the Department of Justice, will file a case.
Tama po.
That is a difference. When there is a case filed, the judge will order a whole departure, uh, order. So, but, uh, without the case being filed, everybody is free to leave this country, Mr. Speaker.
Salamat po sa napakagandang clarification na ating kagalang-galan na distinguished na talagang, uh, patikan sa usapin ang batas. At tama po yung, uh, proseso na ni-require na kahit, uh, ang tinatawag a whole departure order must require. Tama po, uh, sa ating anilag, uh, procedure at na court order. At hindi pwedeng by mere prerogative of the president, by mere suspicion or, uh, yung ano niya, oh, based on prerogatives. And, uh, we thank the good, uh, uh, sponsor for... Hindi ko na papabain dun dahil meron pa sana akong datigdag pero I think, uh, okay na yun. Dahil, uh, uh, secondly, uh, I have actually just three, four points lang po. Uh, secondly po, uh, sa title four, uh, provision relating to entry, uh, chapter four, uh, exclusions, uh, section eighty-four. Uh, exclusion grounds, letter D, number six, uh, to vote those who are engaged or believed to be engaged or likely to engage in aid, abet, or finance any terrorist activity and members or representatives of a foreign terrorist organization. Uh, tama naman po, no, na, uh, kailangan natin pangalagaan ang ating pambansang seguridad sa pagpasok ng, uh, mga, uh, mga taong lilika, no, magahasik ng matitling kabuluhan, uh, terrorist act at ano, uh, na sinasabi. Ngunit, ang concern lang ng kinataong ito, uh, sino po ang magdedefine ng terrorist activity? Uh, meron yung mga concerns ang kinataong ito, uh, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. Ito ba ibabatay sa definisyon ng Anti-Terror Act? Uh, dahil problem- problematic ito sa panahon ng, alam naman din ngayon, no? Napakalaganak ang terrorist tagging. Ang ating, uh, gold medalist na si Heidlin Diaz ay viktor. Nung, uh, ng terrorist tagging, sinama siya doon sa Red October, uh, House Duterte Matrix, no? Na ngayon ay, uh, uh, bini-denay, no, ng pamahalaan. Uh, kaya ngayon, nakakapangamba, no? Uh, ginagawa ito sa mga ilang progressibong grupo sa kasalukuyan. Lalo pinatalakay ang mga, pag- ngayon ay, um, ampetisyon para, uh, kwestionin. Ang Anti-Terror Act ay nasa Court Supremo pa at nakini-kwestion ang Constitucional Litgo. Uh, ang tanong po, maari bang gamitin ito sa mga tumutulong na institusyon? Sa mga progressibong organisasyon? Uh, sa mga nakaraan, halimbawa mismo ang National Task Force and Local Communist Armed Conflict, ang NICA, ang NSA, ang AFD, at iba pang Ahensya ng Gobyerno ay ni-red tag yung mga progressive organizations. At mismo sila ang nagsasabi ng European Union at iba pang mga international organizations, uh, institutions ay tumutulong sa mga ito. So, hindi na sila papapasukin sa bansa? Uh, ganun po ba ang, uh, uh, ini-envision ng batas na ito? Ang major questions, how and who uh, will the definition of terrorist be, uh, articulated, uh, Mr., uh, sa ating kagalang-galan na speaker, sa ating kagalang-galan na sponsor?
Thank you for the question, Congressman Gaithe, Mr. Speaker. Uh, the state has all the right to expel anybody whom they believe will destabilize or bring terrorism in the country. That is the first postulate. Now, who will be the one that will decide on whether a, uh, person, a foreigner coming in will be admitted or not? It is the Bureau of Immigration. Now, how will the Bureau of Immigration, as we have done when I was Commissioner, do this? We are normally given an advance notice from the Philippine National Police, the NBI, Interpol, and, uh, the DFA. If there are some, uh, foreigners who may wish to come and they will show to the Bureau of Immigration, uh, the records that this person should not come in. It is not, you know, uh, just a, 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 uh, a absolute or arbitrary power of the BI. Because the BI in fact will accept, as long as there's no derogatory record, there is no request, they are accepted, uh, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. So there has to be a proof that they will be, uh, 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 they will be destabilizing this country. They have so, they have, uh, connections with a terrorist. So that is the answer. The right is always there, but it is always based on evidence, uh, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague.
Thank you po, uh, kagalang-galan na sponsor. Uh, alam ko po na kayo po ay, uh, nagpagtabuyo the rule of law. At, uh, dapat, uh, nakabatay, no? Tama po, sa wastong due process na hindi basta-basta na lamang naaakusahan ang isang individuo o grupo na terorista na walang matibay na batayan. At, uh, nakakapangamba ako na, uh, sa panahon nga ngayon na napakatalama yung red tagging without even a no-yo of evidence. Eh, it seems, or it feels, as if, uh, ganun na lamang, no, ang nagiging process. And kaya po, uh, major concernin po natin yan, uh, meron na nga po, sir, meron na nga pong fan, din, um, uh, dineport, no? Uh, pumaralin yung si Sister Patricia Fox. At iba pa, na may, may, uh, ganung uri ng pagparatang sa kanila. At nakaka, nakakapangamba dahil ang isang napaka-framed, napakabait, napakalaking ibinuno sa mga kapo Pilipino na Sister Patricia Fox ay, uh, ginawaran na lamang ng ganyong action. Kaya po, concerned ang kinataong ito sa posibleng abuse ng kapangyarihan uh, sa pagde-deport na mga, uh, individuals na automatically nababansag ang, uh, terorista. So maraming salamat po sa clarification. Uh, ito po'y patungkol na sa mga empleyado. Ito yung medyo pabuti po.
Yes.
Ipapasalamat po ako sa inklusion ng mga ilang matagal ng dapat na re-recognize na, na beneficio ng mga ating mga empleyado. At nakita ko nga po, kahit naman dun sa original na immigration law, kinilala naman actually yung, sa Philippine Immigration Act of nineteen-forty, kinilala yung mga beneficio, kuna ng overtime benefits, ng ating mga, uh, officials and employees of the BID who have rendered, uh, services. Uh, alam naman natin yung katangian ng immigration, uh, walang oras, uh, hindi walang, walang oras. Because, uh, alam niyo naman, anong oras tumating yung barko o yung replano eh, due to the time difference and, uh, other concerns. Hindi pare-pareho ang andating ng, ng replano and, of course, the delays. So, totoo yun, ano, kaya nga, uh, na, may ilang beses namin nakausap yung immigration officers na minsan duna sila natutulog, uh, malapit doon sa airport just to ensure that, uh, at any time, uh, merong requirement na mag-deploy doon sa, sa airport ay malapit lamang, halos practically, uh, walking distance lamang yung, uh, yung airport. So ito lang po yung unang katanungan po. Uh, uh, sa title six, miscellaneous provisions, chapter nine, transitory provisions, section one-three-eight, reorganization of the bureau. Nakasaad po, upon approval of this act, all employees of the BID covered by civil service rules and regulations shall continue to hold their present positions pending the reorganization of the bureau in accordance with the new staffing pattern, provided that the salaries, wages, allowances, and other benefits of incumbent officers and employees of, of the bureau shall not be subject to diminution, provided further that employees who have been dismissed for cause shall no longer qualify for any position in the bureau. Um, positive in the sense that there will be no diminution, that they will still that they will still be with the agency, uh, but of course, there will be a reorganization and that is where the problems sometimes lie, no? 'Yung problema po ng pagre-reorganize. Dahil alam po naman natin, in any reorganization, nagkakaroon ng displacement, redundancy, duplication of functions, uh, because of the process of streamlining the organizational structure and systems within the op, within the immigration office. Uh, tanong po mo na, aware po ba ang ating kagalanggalan na sponsor, uh, ilan po ba ngayon ang regular na empleyado? At 'yung tinatawag natin, at madadala natin problema to, ilan 'yung mga tinatawag na job orders or contract of service? Minsan dyan sa BID, ang tawag pa nila dyan ay confidential agents. Hindi ako nagkapamali, puntama ako, uh, i-correct niyo lang po ko kung mali 'yung term ko. But uh, aware po ba ang ating kagalanggalan na sponsor, kung ilan ba ang uh, regular employees, uh, karasama ni immigration officers and others, and itong mga job orders and contract of services? Uh, kaya po natatanong ito, dahil nga po, in any reorganization, kadalasan nga po, itong mga job orders and contract of service are the least priority. Meaning, uh, dahil the arguments stating that they have no employer-employer relationship, uh, their uh, their uh, their contracts are limited, uh, fix 'yung term ng kanilang employment. Uh, ano po ba ang na-envision niyo doon sa ating mga ganitong uri ng kawanit magagawa? Kaya nga po, uh, kahit 'yung ating immigration officers, alam naman natin, talagang hirap sila dahil 'yung oras nga ng kanilang trabaho ay walang oras, sabi nga nila. May oras pero walang oras, meaning uh, they pwede sila mang-extend depende sa requirement ang trabaho. And dutifully, they do function with much sacrifice, especially now, no, with the COVID. Alam ko, I don't have any data, pero sigurado sila 'yung nasa frontline dahil sila nga 'yung unang sasagot, kumbaga, nung mga posibleng pasyente na, na me, na contracted na ng COVID nineteen. So uh, first, pero po ba, alam mo po ba ng ating kagalanggalan na pinatawan ng GNDO City, kung ilan po ba ang ating regular at ilan job orders? At kung ano ang plano para sa kanila, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, kagalanggalan na sponsor?
Uh, thank you for that question, uh, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. As of this time, I do not really know the exact number of uh, regular employees and those under job order. But let me say this, that if this bill will be passed, considering that uh, the job orders have already been serving uh, the Bureau of Immigration. And so therefore, there is a way for our uh, officials in the new Bureau of Immigration to consider those who already are part and uh, already served as job orders or confidential agents. But since there will be a new law precisely, then they have the power uh, to be able to choose the best ones who can be uh, included in the regular, regular plantilia, uh, Mr. Speaker. So what we have is a protection that there'll be no diminution, they will be always, they will be uh, reappointed. And so following the pattern and the uh, staffing pattern of the new uh, bill which will become law hopefully.
Salamat po, um, sa ating kagalanggalan na sponsor. At uh, yun po sana hinahanapin natin sa ating pinapanukalan batas. Mabigyan rin ng karapatang proteksyon ang ating saligang batas ay nagsasaad, no, na kahit 'yung mga hindi regular na empleyado ay bibigyan rin ang kaupulang proteksyon. And alam ko na, tulad na napanggit ko, in being proposed organization of the BID, uh, as uh, we have experienced in the past, they are the least priority. And right now, if the law is passed, uh, I do not think uh, it is our objective to allow them to lose their uh, employment opportunities. Hindi, I don't think that is the intention of the law. Dahil alam naman natin na, lalo na ngayon sa panahon ng pandemya, kulangan trabaho, tumataas ang unemployment rate, uh, we do not envision to add to the unemployment rate. So we hope that a specific provision also be added to protect uh, not only the regular employees, but also the non-regular workers of the BID uh, by providing certain mechanisms to ensure their continued employment in the BID. So yun po 'yung isa. Uh, gusto ko lang pa i-comment ang ating kagalanggalan na sponsor doon sa pagtatayo ng uh, Immigration Trust Fund na which will serve as the uh, a fund uh, to be sourced from thirty percent of retained income of the BID, although there is a cap of one point two billion, which will uh, serve as uh, benefits, part of this amount would be used as benefits for the employees. And I think that is most welcome for our employees in the BID, considering their hardship, considering the sacrifice that they do for our country, no? Hindi biro po 'yung, 'yung, sila 'yung, sabi ko nga eh, talaga sila 'yung nasa frontline, physically, technically, literally, sila 'yung nasa harap eh, kasi 'yung pagpasokan ng foreigners or Filipinos sa unang gate ng ating uh, ng ating bansa. Sila 'yung maaring sumagip nung health uh, health problems, no? Na tulad nga ng COVID nineteen. Kaya po, uh, ito ay very welcome. Uh, at gayun din, uh, winewelcome po namin 'yung uh, pag uh, taas ng salary grades ang ating immigration officers, no? From salary grade eleven to thirteen, which is very, very welcome. Ang Ombudsmigration Officer Two, from salary grade thirteen to fifteen, which is very, very welcome. Pang ating Immigration Officer Three, again, from salary grade sixteen to eighteen. At 'yung immigration, senior immigration officer, from SG nineteen to SG twenty. And I think these are uh, very welcome, no, kasi 'yung upgrading ng uh, salary grade positions ay matagal na. I think uh, kayo pa ata ay uh, Commissioner nun, eh, there has been declamor, no, for an upgrading. And I think this, the inclusion of this provision of upgrading is uh, most welcome. Uh, meron po bang idea? Kasi syempre ang ma-empleyado, o yun ang hagad pinitik na eh. May idea po ba ang ating kagalanggalan na, na sponsor? Uh, magkano kaya ba nakakolekta ng BI uh, mula sa immigration fees fines? Para alam niyo naman 'yung ma-empleyado kina-computer hagad nila yan eh, ano ba 'yung thirty percent?
Yeah. Uh, first of all, let me, Mr. Speaker, thank Congressman Ferdinand Gaite for supporting the extra idea, the use of income of thirty percent to be a part of the trust fund uh, for the immigration employees and officials. Thank you very much for your support. And also, we thank your support for the increasing of the salary raise. It used to be very low, eleven percent to thirteen, and thirteen again fifteen. So uh, we thank you for that. Now, as of now, I don't have, during my time, I became, uh, we were able to increase revenue to one billion. I would surmise the last hearing that we have, that we are collecting already about four to five billion uh, a year. So that is uh, the estimate that we have on the income. So thirty percent of that will be retained and it will go to first, uh, modernization first. Uh, fifty percent will go to modernization. And then uh, more computers, more uh, you know, machines that will be make us uh, modern in terms of dealing with our foreigners who come in, and also in their registration as foreigners in our country. And then thirty percent uh, for the uh, benefit of the workers. So and then twenty percent uh, for training. That is the breakdown. There is a breakdown. To assure that uh, while we retain thirty percent, Congressman Gaite, we are going to give only thirty percent for benefits. And then we are going to give fifty percent to modernization by equipment. And then twenty percent for more training, especially integrity seminars for our immigration people.
Salamat po. And I think all those uh, all those uh, uh, additional improvement in terms of facilities, uh, professionalization of the bureaucracy, and of course, the benefits of the employees will will redound not only to the betterment of the service, but also for improvement for our uh, kababayans and foreigners who visit our country. So alam ko po na uh, pare-pareho ang ating intensyon para pangalagaan ang ating mga frontliners, as I will call them frontliners because practically, they are in the frontlines. Uh, and uh, alam ko rin po na, kayo rin po ay bunga nung inyong uh, stint as Commissioner ng BID. Uh, alam ko na sa puso niyo 'yung kalagayan, kagalingan ng ating uh, mga kawanit, kapwa kasama sa gobyerno. At gayun din para paano pa, paunarin ang uh, serbisyo para sa mga mga gobyerno. Uh, yun lang po, uh, Mr. Speaker. Salamat po ng marami sa pagmininaw sa mga mahalagang sabihin na uh, grace po ng tinatawang ito. At uh, we hope, no, na sa tulungan natin uh, 'yung kapakanan ng mga kawanit at ng serbisyo ay tuloy-tuloy na maitaguyod. Salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Salamat po, uh, Mrs. Sponsor. Uh, isang magandang hapon sa atin lang.
Uh, thank you very much, Congressman Gaite, Mr. Speaker. I really thank Congressman Gaite for being really concerned with our uh, immigration officials and employees. And certainly, this bill will upgrade their salaries and give more benefits to our uh, frontliners. They are the first line of defense actually, uh, not only on uh, immigration, but also on uh, the, we go there and they also would be able to see that uh, you know, immigration is, should be a wind to be able to bring good uh, good uh, foreigners to our shore, but will also be the block, the stumbling block if we have questionable and terrorists who are coming. So we thank Mr. Speaker, Congressman Gaite for his very precious interventions. Thank you.
Majority floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. There being no other members who wishes to interpolate, may I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we open the period of amendments?
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, may I move that we close the period of amendments?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Deputy Speaker Rupos Rodriguez is recognized.
Yeah, yeah, we, we committed earlier in the interpolation that there is a provision that I would accept the amendment of Congressman Gaite on the prevention of departure. Uh, can, can we hear Congressman Gaite for that? Because I'm going to accept that amendment.
Okay, may I solicit the proper motion from our majority floor leader to reopen the period of amendments?
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we reopen the period of individual amendments?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of individual amendments is reopened.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Ferdinand Gaite for his individual amendments?
The Honorable Gentleman from the party list, Bayan Muna. The Honorable Ferdinand Gaite is recognized for his amendments. Please proceed, Honorable Gaite.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair. At uh, dun na nga sa kanina ang interpolation. At uh, narinig naman natin ang position ang ating kagalanggalan na uh, Congressman Rupos Rodriguez. Uh, binumukhahe ng tinatawang ito na i-delete ang uh, so section sev- seventeen, so presidential prerogatives. And delete the entire item, letter F, uh, stating prohibit the departure from the Philippines of any person who is likely to disclose information affecting national security or is likely to organize a rebellion abroad against Philippines or its presence in the country is necessary to face or be a witness in criminal proceedings, Your Honor. Tinatanggap po ba ng ating kagalanggalan na?
Mr. Speaker, we accept that amendment. We move for the deletion of that paragraph. After all, the authorities can file a case against anybody who is doing all of those uh, uh, actions. And there can be a whole departure order to be properly issued by the courts. Accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. On the part of the majority, we join this sponsor in accepting the individual amendment.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. The amendments as proposed by the Honorable Ferdinand Gaite are accepted. Please proceed with your amendments.
Uh, yun na lang po, um, Mr. Speaker. Salamat po sa pagkakataong ito at uh, 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 thank you po for allowing the amendments to our House bill. Salamat po.
Congratulations po. Majority floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. May I move that we terminate the period of amendments?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we approve House Bill ninety-one seventy-eight? Uh, eighty-eight. Eighty-eight five zero on second reading.
Hearing no objection, voting will proceed. All those in favor of the approval on second reading of House Bill eight-eight-five-zero as amended, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill eight-eight-five-zero as amended, approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for the consideration of House Bill ninety-eight twenty-six as contained in Committee Report ten eighty-four? And may we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure?
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. House Bill nine-eight-two-six as embodied in Committee Report one-zero-eight-four is under consideration. Could the Secretary General be directed to read it, the title of the House bill?
House Bill number nine-eight-two-six, and creating the Barakai Island Development Authority, defining its powers and functions and providing funds therefore.
Majority floor leader.
Thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, may I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate and recognize the Honorable Nina Taduran for her sponsorship?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Sponsorship and debate is opened. The honorable sponsor, our deputy majority leader, Honorable Representative of Party List, ACIS, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the explanatory note of the aforementioned bill be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, we join this sponsor in adopting the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech for the said measure.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Explanatory note of the measure shall serve as its sponsorship speech. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who signify their intention to, to interpolate, may I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we open the period of amendments?
With no objections, the period of amendments is opened.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, may I move that we terminate the period of amendments?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we approve House Bill ninety-eight twenty-six on second reading?
Are there any objections? Hearing none, voting shall proceed. All those in favor of approval on second reading of House Bill nine-eight-two-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill nine-eight-two-six approved on second reading. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for the consideration of House Bill ninety-five eighty-three as contained in Committee Report ten fifty of the Committee on Natural Resources? And may we direct the Secretary General to read? And may we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Under consideration is House Bill nine-five-eight-three as found in Committee Report one-zero-five-zero. Secretary General kindly read the title of the House bill.
House Bill number nine-five-eight-three, an act providing for the mode of disposition of alienable and disposable lands and regulating the use and development of the areas in Boracay Island, Municipality of Malay Province of Aklan.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate and recognize the Honorable Nina Taduran of Party List Act C I S?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Sponsorship and debate is opened, and we recognize our esteemed Deputy Majority Leader, the Honorable Lady from Party List Act C I S, the Honorable Rowena Nina O. Taduran, to sponsor the said measure. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat. Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill number nine-five-eight-three be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in behalf of the majority, we join this sponsor in adopting the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech for the said measure.
Please proceed, Honorable Member who wishes to be recognized.
Mr. Speaker.
My mistake, Majority Floor Leader, kindly reiterate your measure, your motion.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, may I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate?
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I move that we open the period of amendments?
Hearing no objection, the period of amendments is opened.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, may I move that we terminate the period of amendments?
With no objections, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for the approval of House Bill ninety-five eighty-three on second reading?
Hearing no objection to the motion, voting will proceed. All those in favor of the approval on second reading of House Bill nine-five-eight-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill nine-five-eight-three is approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Carlos Isagadi Sarate for his manifestation?
Our esteemed Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Carlos Caloy Sarate of the Party List, bayan muna, is recognized. Please proceed.
Uh, maraming salamat, magandang hapon na, Ginaw Speaker, at sa ating mga kasamahan, na, na sa plenario at na sa Zoom. Uh, uh, Ginawong Speaker, hayaan niyo pong mag, uh, lahat ako ng omnibus manifestation sa dalawang panukalang batas. Ang House Bill number nine-eight-two-six na, uh, naglalayong magtatag ng barang, uh, Boracay Island Development Authority, at ang House Bill number nine-five-eight-three na nagbibigay naman ng kapangyarihan para, uh, sa, uh, disposisyon ng mga alienabolan, dyan din sa Boracay. Uh, Ginawong Speaker, kung maalala po natin noong mga nakaraang taon, nung isinara ang, uh, isla ng Boracay, naglaro na ng pangamba ang mga mamamayan, kung ano ang magiging epekto nito, at kung ano ba ang tunay na dahilan, no? Bakit, uh, isinara ang, uh, isla ng Boracay? Ang naging, uh, uh, kadahilanan nito, ang ginawang, uh, rason bakit isinara ito ay parado sa rehabili- rehabilitasyon ng Boracay. Uh, subalit na, maraming sektor, no? Hindi lang sa Boracay, kundi, uh, maging, uh, sa probinsya ng Aklan. Ang na ngangamba na may mas, uh, malaki pang binabalak, no? At, uh, may, uh, marami pang plano na gagawin sa Boracay para, uh, mas magkaroon ng kontrol pa rito ang mga malalaking negosyo, at lalong-lalo na ang mga dayuhang kapital. Uh, at the expense and prejudice ng ating mga lokal na mga, uh, momomuhunan, at lalong-lalo na ang ating mga apektadong mga mamamayan, kasama na riyan ang ating mga indigenous peoples. At, uh, parang nangyari na nga, uh, Ginawong Speaker, ang pinangambaan nila sa ating pagpasan sa araw na ito ng dalawang panukalang batas na itong House Bill number nine-eight-two-six at House Bill number nine-five-eight-three. Uh, na, kung saan, doon sa House Bill number nine-eight-two-six, ay, parang, uh, nilalabag nito ang prinsipyo ng, uh, lokal na autonomiya. Uh, dahil sa tabing ng pagcreate ng isang body corporate, no? Ang barangay, uh, Boracay Island Development Authority, ang pambansang pamahalaan ay nagginagaranteryahan sa loob ng limampung taon na mapontrolan niya ang ekonomiya at, uh, maging ang pagunlad ng, uh, isla ng Boracay, no? Or ang munisip, uh, munisipyo ng Malay. Uh, na talagang, sa, sa una, sa sagasaan nito ang interest ng mga, uh, local government units. Uh, alam po natin, uh, Mr. Speaker, na kalakha ng ekonomiya ng, uh, uh, munisipyo ng Malay at maging ng probinsya ng Aklan. And in the, uh, uh, larger extent, maging ng, uh, ekonomiya ng isla ng Panay ay nakasalalay, no? At umaasa, uh, sa revenue na nakukuha nila dito sa isla ng Boracay dahil nga sa turismo. At dito sa panukalang batas na ating, uh, tinapayagan sa ngayon, ng ipinasaong second reading, ay, parang, uh, indirectly or nakikita natin dito na ang, uh, local government units, ang munisipyo ng Malay, ang probinsya ng Aklan, ay, uh, mapapasailalim, no? At mapangig babawal sila nitong, uh, government-owned and controlled corporation, no? Uh, dahil, uh, totoo na patuloy silang makakapangulekta ng, uh, lokal na buwis dahil ng real estate taxes, but in all other impositions and even on the development. Kung paanong, uh, paunlarin pa, ang isla ng Boracay, ay, ito'y nakasalalay na uh, sa kamay, no? Nga, uh, BIDA or, uh, Boracay Island Development Authority. Napakalawak po ng kapangyarihan na iginawa dito sa, uh, entity na ito sa loob ng limampung taon, uh, kung ito ay magiging batas. Sa katunayan, uh, kahit na merong tokinismo na provisyon na nagsasaad, na nirerespeto nito at ipromote ito, halimbawa, ang interest ng mga, uh, mamamayang Pilipino, mga katutubong Pilipino, indigenous peoples, kung babalikan po natin ang komposisyon, uh, ng Board of Directors, no? Na kung saan, uh, ito ang maglalahad ng mga patakalan at palisiya uh, sa buong isla ng Boracay ay hindi po represente- uh, represented, no? Ang mga marginalized sectors, ordinary sector, in- in- including ang ating mga indigenous peoples. Uh, bagkos, ang makita natin dito, uh, represented 'yung mga, uh, government agencies at ang mga negosyo, no? May mga representatives from the best business sector, uh, pero wala ho sa mga ordinaryong mamamayan. Ilan ho lamang 'yan, no? Sa nakita nating, uh, uh, maging implikasyon, no? Ang creation nitong, uh, corporate entity na ito. Uh, meron din ho tayong nakita ang mga provisyon na, uh, naglalagay sa alanganin, no? Sa kasiguruhan, hindi lang sa hanapbuhay, kundi sa paninirahan ng mga, uh, mamamayan, no? At ng mga indigenous peoples dyan sa isla ng Boracay o sa munisipyo ng Malay. Dahil tinapayagan dito ang, uh, ang BIDA, no? Nakabagay sa kanyang kapangyarihan to order the demolition, no? And even remove, removal of structures that it been, uh, supposedly illegally constructed, no? At meron ding mga provisyon dito na nalalagay din sa alanganin ang interest ng mga maliliit na negosyo. So, ilan, ilalamang ito, uh, galang-galang na speaker, no? Na, uh, ating nakikita na maging implikasyon nito, uh, sa pagpasan ng batas na ito. At kaakibat dyan, yun namang House Bill number nine-five-eight-three, uh, na magbibigay rin, no? Nang, uh, puwang, no? Para pa sa lalong pagbubukas, uh, sa disposisyon ng mga kalupaan, no? Mga properties dyan, uh, sa Boracay, uh, na magiging mailagay sa kontrol ng mga malalaking negosyo. At the, again, at the expense and prejudice of our, uh, local residents, uh, even especially our indigenous peoples. So ito po ang aming, uh, maliing, uh, pagrehistro, no? Ang aming mga pagpuna sa dalawang panukalang batas na ito mula sa Minorya at sa Gloking Makabayan. Dahil sa tingin po namin, ang, uh, creation, no? Pagpasan itong dalawang batas na ito, ang creation ng BIDA will not redound to the best interest of our people. Uh, bagkos, lalo lamang po magsasadlok sa kahirapan ang ating mga nahihirapan ng mamamayan, no? Lalong-lalo na ang ating mga katutubo. At hindi rin ito, uh, uh, makakatulong, no? Doon sa ating nabanggit po na kaninang, uh, uh, espirito, no? Nang autonomiya, na dapat ang ating mga lokal na mga pamahalaan ay bibigyan ng kapangyarihan para linangin at mapaunlad ang kanilang mga komunidad. So maraming salamat, uh, Ginawong Speaker, sa pagbibigay ng pagkakataon na may ilahad ang, uh, mga puntong ito, at, uh, sa panahon ng, uh, pagbuboto para sa ikatatlong pagkakataon, ay mas espisifikong ilahad natin at ilalahad ng Minorya, at ilalahad ng, uh, Gloking Makabayan ang kanilang pagtutol, no? Sa pagkapasan itong dalawang panukalang batas na ito, ang House Bill number nine-eight-two-six and House Bill number nine-five-eight-three. Maraming salamat po, at na magandang hapon sa ating lahat.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for your suspension? The manifestation of the Honorable Zarate is well noted. Session is suspended for a few minutes. Mr. Speaker. Session is resumed. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bicameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill number seventy-four oh-six and Senate Bill number eighteen thirty-two, strengthening and modernizing the Bureau of Fire Protection. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said bicameral conference committee report.
All those in favor of the ratification of the disagreeing provisions of House Bill seven-four zero-six and Senate Bill one-eight-three-two, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. Bicameral Conference Committee Report is ratified. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. May I move that we adjourn until August twenty-three? At two, three P M of August twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Session is adjourned until August twenty-three, Monday, three in the afternoon, so... Okay, thank you very much. Congrats, congrats.